Okay, are we ready, Allison?
Yes, we're ready. Everyone's in.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order this this evening at 6:02 PM. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on January 4th, 2023, to review the following projects and determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land-containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. Tonight, the commission will be holding a public hearing, which will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or by type in, typing in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. To unmute yourself, send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnvironment using the hashtag #ConConHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Would staff please identify themselves?
Allison Berzius, Environment Department.
Kat Ashel, Environment Cabinet.
Great, thank you so much. Call the role of Commissioners Presidents, Commissioner Sullivan.
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aldo Guerin.
You, Commissioner Conan.
I'm here, Chair Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond.
Alice Richmond is here, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst.
Anne Herbst.
Great, thank you. Okay, so first item on the agenda this evening is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061909 from VHB on behalf of the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority for the proposed resurfacing of the existing pavement and associated stormwater management improvements at the MBTA Mattapan Station located at Blue Hill Avenue, Mattapan. The resource area is 100-foot buffer to inland bank. This project was continued from, I believe it was December 14th, because there was a DEP file number had not been assigned. We went through a project presentation and got a few things clarified regarding a landscaping plan and slipping me what else that we were, we were looking for. So with that, as far as the project proponent, if you want to identify yourself and just let us know if you have anything to add to what you said at the last hearing.
Hi, this is, oh, go ahead, Jeremy.
Sorry, yeah, this is, this is Jeremy Fontaine from the MBTA and I'm here with VHB. And I know there was one question that was brought up in an email that I think VHB can take the lead on for answering.
Yep, the DEP had just made a note that there needs to be the minimum of the two-feet groundwater separation between the bottom of the infiltration trench and the seasonal groundwater. And we cross-checked the test pits with the bottom of our system, and we do meet that requirement.
Great. By how much? Just curious.
So the bottom of our system is at 30, and the groundwater observed was at elevation 24, so about six feet. It makes sense because then the pond set is a little ways down from our, our site. So we have the elevation in our, in our benefit there.
Okay, so Allison, I guess I would go to you. How do things look for this filing?
Yeah, we have no additional comments or questions on this filing.
Okay, before I go to Commissioners, I just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand and type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. Unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnvironment using the hashtag #ConConHearing. Commissioner Sullivan, do you have anything additional, any additional questions since the last hearing?
No, no more questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Guerin.
No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Conan.
In the O&M Plan, the Inspection and Maintenance Section talks about record keeping. Where will these records be available?
Let me double check. I believe they will be available upon request through the MBTA.
Yes, that's how we usually do it with our other areas. Whenever the Conservation Commission would like to copy or any other records, we can provide those.
I see. Okay. And is the O&M Plan for the whole year? Like, is it an annual plan? Does it have, I was looking to see if there are like separate sections for winter or anything, but I couldn't find any, but maybe it's something, I don't know.
Oh, yes, it's just for the whole year. I believe there are, yeah, spots where we reference seasonal inspections for catch basins and et cetera.
Okay, then just one last question. In case of any extreme weather events, are, are there preventive maintenance kind of aspects to this plan for that or reactive things that will be done after the event?
Reactive after the event.
As in something happens and then, like flooding happens, an unpreventable amount of flooding, and then what? Is that, would that be part of O&M?
Yeah, okay.
Well, in terms of the facility location, it'd probably be reactive. If any of our catch basins were flooded, we would, we would have, who, we currently have a contractor who cleans out the catch basin. So in that case, they would come out on site. It would just determine of what the, you know, what the extreme event would cause. If it was felled trees or anything like that, we would use another contractor. It just depend, it'd depend on where on the facility and how close the tracks determines how we would approach the event, or the incident, I should say.
Sorry, this one keeps ringing. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I was just like looking to understand that from the O&M, and I couldn't quite get it, but maybe that part of the plan is elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst.
Nothing from me, thanks.
Thank, do we have anybody from the public who's raised their hand? Looks like a no. Okay, so with that.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerin.
Aye.
Commissioner Conan.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
I vote aye, carry six, nothing. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061907 and Boston File Number 2022-056 from Norris Environmental Services on behalf of Estuary 2 Development Group LLC for the proposed construction of a three-story, 14-unit residential building, walkway, driveway, retaining wall drainage system and associated utilities and landscaping located at 173 to 175 Walnut Street in Dorchester. Resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Mr. Chairman, this is Tim Johnson. I'm the project architect. I'm also joined by the two engineers from Norris Environmental, Maureen Harold, and from Spruhan Civil Engineers, Guillermo Beltran.
Great, thank you. Floor is all yours.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is Tim Johnson. I'm the project architect. We're here to give a first introductory review of the project to the board. I will give a brief overview of the project, followed by Maureen Harold, the environmental engineer, and then finally by the civil engineer, and we'll, we'll take questions after that, if that's fine with you, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pardon me. This is a new proposing on a vacant, approximately one-half acre site, a 14-unit building with garage at 173-175 Walnut Street in Dorchester. Our developer, our client is Estuary 2 Development Group. I am the project architect. As I mentioned earlier, Guillermo Beltran will be from Spruhan Engineering and Maureen Harold from Norris Engineering. Next, please. So here is the sort of preliminary drawings showing the proposed, proposed 14-unit residential development. This site is located in FEMA Flood Zone AE and the Coastal Flood Resilience Overlay District. The proposed 14-unit residential development with garage is zoning code compliant and will conform with 780 CMR 120G flood-resistant construction. Next, please. This shows the site plan. The building has been designed to parallel the coastal resilience solutions for Dorchester Port Norfolk. As the site plan shows, a proposed site coverage breakdown is as follows. The building is 58% coverage of the site. Landscaping is 30% coverage, and pervious walkway and driveways at 12%. Finally, the floor elevation of the lowest occupiable floor is set at 19.5, which is the sea level rise, base flood elevation in the 2070 scenario under the Boston Harbor flood risk model. And this lowest floor sits above a 21,000 cubic foot crawl space for compensatory storage. Next slide, please. All right now, I will hand this off to Maureen Harold to talk about other aspects of the project.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Maureen Harold. Because the project is located within land subject to coastal storm flowage, we did try and design the project relative, relative to this site. So we incorporated a number of different items into the design, one of them being pervious pavers to mitigate and have less pervious pavement on the property. We incorporated lawn and landscape areas. We've also provided infiltration for the building itself. But I think one of the largest things that we've incorporated into the project is flood vents. So we are proposing 37 flood vents around the entire structure itself. The flood vents will be two feet wide by one foot high around the entire perimeter. Beneath the garage floor, we are proposing a crawl space. This crawl space will provide compensatory storage, which essentially will allow the floodwaters to flow through and beneath the building itself. The bottom of the crawl space is proposed at elevation 13 feet. In addition to this, we are proposing to accommodate for increased heat waves, we are proposing roof coverings of Energy Star asphalt jingles and rubble roofing. We are proposing to remove six trees on site, five trees to remain, but we are planting 10 additional trees, as well as some native ground covering and shrubs for cooling effect. For extreme precipitation events, we are proposing roof runoff to be directed into an infiltration system and as well as the landscaping and the green space on the plan will be, will also provide infiltration. And I'd like to send this over to the design engineer, Gil Marrow. He'll talk about the crawl space and the compensatory storage that the project was designed for.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Guillermo Beltran from Spruhan Engineering. As it was mentioned, the development consists of 14-unit, three-story residential building, permeable pavers, and some landscaped areas. We will be capturing the runoff of the whole roof with roof drains and directed to an infiltration system consisting of 14 storm tech plastic chambers with one foot of crushstone below. The system has been designed to contain the 100-year storm event and provide an overall reduction in runoff. Also, floor drains will be installed in the parking level that will be connected to an oil grade separator and will discharge to the sewer main as per Bosser Water and Sewer requirements. For erosion control, the project will be in, well, the project access will be in Walnut Street, and fiber rolls will be installed around the construction areas prior to any work. And we will be maintained throughout the project.
Guillermo, one second, please. Could you slide, next slide, please? I'm sorry, I should, I should have said that earlier. Next slide. There we go. Sorry, Guillermo, that's, that's the foundation showing the crawl space and the subsurface infiltration systems and a section through the crawl space. Continue, please.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Also, stabilized construction entrance will be installed. The stormwater management system was designed to comply with the MasDPE standards, and further information can be found in the project narrative and the stormwater report. Regarding flooding mitigation, an empty crawl space is being proposed down to elevation 13. This space is designed to be flooded and will compensate for the field that it's been brought to the site by grading around the building, foundation walls, the columns, and the steel beam in the crawl space. The crawl space will provide a total of 21,200 cubic feet of compensatory storage. This represents almost 10 times the field that is being provided by the mentioned items, which is 2,900 cubic feet. The cubic, and the current field calculations can be seen in the, in the plan, in the civil plans. And I'm happy to respond. Any questions the commission or the public may have. Thank you.
Sure, great. Thank you, Guillermo. Could you just, what's your infiltration rate there? One inch, 1.25?
We have sand there, so we use rolls rate. We used 8.27 for the infiltr, as infiltration.
Okay, I'll let, maybe I'll let Commissioner Sullivan dig in on that one. Okay, Allison, what do you have on this?
Thank you, Chair Parker. A couple of clarifying questions. The first about the design flood elevation for the project. You mentioned that you were designed to, I believe, 19.5 Boston City Base, but it appears that you have a residential unit on the first floor. My understanding is that the Coastal Flood Resilience Zoning Overlay District calls for two feet of freeboard in that instance, which would put it at 21.5 for the first floor elevation. Did you evaluate designs that did not have a first floor unit or that elevated that first floor above 21.5 BCB?
Allison, yes, this is Tim Johnson. No, we did not look at alternative designs. I must admit that I'm not an expert designing in flood zones, but if we can go back to the foundation plan with the building section, the crawl space section, please, and I just wanted to clarify for Allison. Right there, please. Yes, you can see the foundation plan is broken at about one-eighth of the length of it on the left side. That is where the residential unit sits on top of that portion of the crawl space. Now, we can bring that entire unit up one level. We are looking more at a urban planning perspective where you would have a first floor elevation, three feet approximately above sidewalk level for good, good urban planning. So we are flexible on bringing that residential unit up to a higher elevation. This section through the crawl space shows our crawl space at 13 feet and then our lowest level at 19.5 feet. I hope I responded okay to that question, Allison.
Thank you. And then my, my second set of questions is around the trees that are to be removed. I see in your plans that you identified the six trees to be removed and that 10 will be added. Could you give more information on the DBH, the cumulative DBH of the trees that are to be planted? And obviously with, with conditioning, we would want to see a restoration plan and more detail there.
Yes, if we could scroll up to the landscape plan, please. So there. That's a little bit, could be a little bit fuzzy there, but I did give the, we had our, our, our barist go out and identify each tree, the caliper on each tree, which are shown on the plan. You can see within the building footprint, there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 trees that are going to be removed. So we can certainly generate more information on these trees, Allison. This is our first pass-through. So again, I hope I'm not giving too much of a general answer there. But we did have identified, to answer your question, we did identify each of the tree to be removed, the size of the caliper or the circumference of the tree trunk and the species.
Okay, that's all the questions for now, Chair Parker.
Great, thank you. I just want to remind members of the public, and I know that we've had some, we, we, for the record, we have some public comments that have been entered into the record for this hearing. And I want to remind members of the public, if you'd like to speak, to provide verbal public comment, please raise your hand and type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. Unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnvironment using the hashtag #ConConHearing. Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
On the, the floor plan that shows these vehicles parked there, what is the elevation of that surface where the vehicles park?
That's at 19.5, sir.
Okay, so that is a 19. So under that, you've got this compensatory storage. So it's designed to store the water that falls on the site? Or is it the tide, if the tide's up high enough? What's it doing?
Guillermo, do you want to answer that?
Yep, that space is designed only for floating. The whole roof is being captured by the infiltration system. So there's no water expected from the rain into that area.
So the space is designed for the tide water that may get up high enough to flood out the site?
That's correct.
A little confused. And so you fill up your basement with water, then what do you do with it? Just hope that that also infiltrates down to the same soil, or I'm just confused how it works, that's all.
Could we scroll down to the foundation plan again, please? Sorry, right there. So you can see the two subsurface infiltration systems outlined on the top left of the foundation plan. And then that crawl space, yes, remains empty and relatively dry until there is a flood. Correct. We have 37 flood vents around the perimeter at a one-to-one ratio, one square foot of crawl space to one square inch of flood vent. And it will sit vacant until floodwaters arise. Yes, sir.
And then the floodwaters come in and flood it? And you just rely on natural infiltration to empty it all out again?
Yes, Guillermo, do you have any information on that?
Well, yep, that's correct.
All right, I've never seen that on any coastal, you know, compensatory storage we normally see inland, not necessarily on the coastal. So I was just curious why you're doing it and how it works, so. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Did you have any comment on that infiltration rate? I didn't quite understand the number on that.
Well, they, the water show will check it. What they need to hold is, and I'm not sure how many square feet this is, either an inch or an inch and a quarter of the rainfall, they have to hold that volume of water. So no matter what the infiltration rate is, and it is pretty good out here, the volume of water, whether it takes one day to empty out those infiltration tanks or up to three days to empty them, is what the, what the commission's requirement is. So at the rate he gave, they would empty out fairly quick. But you got up to three days, you can, as long as you can store the volume of those tanks. Need to store one inch, at least one inch of rain, if not inch and a quarter over the entire impervious area. A calculation which will be checked when they go through the site plan process.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, unless you guys already know you've done that count.
Guillermo?
Yep, the system, the system will storage one inch of storm.
Yeah. So you're less than 100,000 square feet of.
Yeah, and it will be empty before the 72 hours, for sure.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, so that, that's all that is, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's, it will all be looked at again to design it, but I was just confused about the compensatory storage. That's all. I've never seen this on the coastline.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Guerin.
Yes, so I have a particular focus on the landscape plan and the coastal resiliency plan. Wanted to ask about the driveway easement. So that implies to me that this is a, that that edge, that southern edge of the property is on a private roadway. Is that correct?
Yes, if we could go to the coastal resiliency plan, please, which is up. Please, right there. Yes, this is, was a very large parcel that was subdivided into three lots. One, one lot contains those two existing buildings. One is that large multifamily at 171, and then the townhouses at 169 below them. And then the other lot, which is where the bottom right, where the little square of land is, that's a vacant lot, and this lot where the proposed building is, is a vacant lot. So they are all part of a condominium development with a share with driveway easement, sir.
Great. So the, let's see, the western edge of the property there, that's what's on Walnut Street, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so that's a public street, all right?
Yes, sir, and the front doors face that public street.
Okay, great, great. So the existing trees and the proposed trees, other than, I guess, there's one right where Walnut Street is over there. They don't seem to be in a sidewalk location, correct? They're all on private property.
They are all on private property, correct, sir. The required front setback is five feet, which we adhere to. That's where our front ramp is. So they all are on private property. The sidewalk is six feet, so that's a minimum for street trees. So street trees could be planted in the future. Well, we're not showing any street trees right now. Hello?
Commissioner Guerin, are you still there?
All these trees are on your initiative, then. Okay, that's great.
Yes, sir.
The thing I see in landscape plan is for the new trees, there's a mention, it says, "New Boston Parks Approved Trees Typical." I know that because as an employee of the Parks Department, we're usually not in the business of approving trees on private property. You know, we approve street trees in the sidewalk, which is in the public right of way. We actually, and you know, oftentimes we are, we're the ones planting the trees. So I'm curious is what you mean by new Boston Parks approved trees? For these, you know, new trees that you're planting?
Yes, sir. Well, as you know, on the Boston Parks website, they do have a street-approved or Boston Parks-approved trees, which are native to this region. A street approved or Boston Parks approved trees, which are native to this region. And, uh, we felt that was a good, uh, template, uh, for tree species for the, for the, uh, for the site, sir.
Okay, um, so I, I just, uh, want to say, you know, I. Being busy with my own work, I haven't seen that portion of the website, so I can't. Uh, verify at the moment whether or not all the trees on there are native. Uh, but I do know, uh, the commission here, uh, wants to be sure that all these, you know, new trees are, are native. So I, I just want to, uh, you know, uh, have you be sure to, uh, look at the, um, native tree species list. That, um, our commission, uh, uses for, um, you know, for, uh, what we require in the, um. In this, so, uh, I, I believe Allison will be able to provide that for you, just to be sure that, that, you know, that goes ahead. The other question I had is, um, your landscape plan mentions Harbor Walk. Or rather, the coastal resiliency plan on that northern edge, so is that something that you folks will be implementing?
Well, that is part of the. Coastal resilience solutions for Dorchester Port Norfolk. Uh, you can see, we copied a section of that, uh, planning study. And put it on the coastal resiliency plan. Um, that harbor walk, uh, would be at elevation nineteen. As would the Joe, Joe Finnegan Park would be raised to nineteen, as would Walnut Street would, uh, be raised to nineteen foot, uh, BCB. So we just took that information, uh, from the planning study for Dorchester Port Norfolk.
Okay, so, um, your project does not do anything in terms of, uh, constructing or contributing to. Uh, financing this harbor walk?
Uh, my short answer is not to my knowledge, sir, no.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, that, that's all I have to say on this. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Conant?
Thank you, Chair Parker. This, uh. The crawl space looks very interesting, as Commissioner Sullivan pointed out, this. I just wanted to understand, in simple terms, where the rainwater is going, as opposed to where the tidal. Flooding is going. If you could just separately address those two. I appreciate that, thank you.
Guillermo, I have the foundation plan, Guillermo's offsite, um, he may not be able to see this. I have the foundation plan up. The architectural site plan showing where your subsurface infiltration systems are, and of course, the crawl space and the detail. Do you want to address that, please?
Yeah, um, the rainwater will be captured. By roof drains and directed to the infiltration system, which is below the crawl space underground. And the. Coastal floating will be stored in the crawl space, which is directly below the first floor. You can see in the detail, uh, the location of the bands and the crawl space itself.
Could we scroll down several sheets to the engineering? Uh, I'll show where that detail is. Uh, Guillermo?
Yep.
Next one, right, right there. Sorry, right there. So you have the storm tech infiltration system detail at the top left. You can see the crawl space floor elevation at thirteen feet. And then we have the, uh, storm tech, excuse me, the storm tech, um, system. Showing in the.
Thank you. So, so this rainwater will all be infiltrated directly, there's no storage of rainwater. It's only storm wa, flooding, storm surge or tidal water, as in saltwater from the harbor or from. The Nippon City River coming in, and that's the one that'll, that's expected to go into the crawl space.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And so. I'm, I'm wondering, with respect to the design life of this building and the expected sea level rise over the next fifty years. Which is now quite well documented, thanks to Climate Ready Dorchester, which is, which you pointed out. And also in the state government's website. Are you expecting that the, there will be stagnation of water in this crawl space? Because there will be water, but it can't go down because there's water everywhere. What happens then?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, Guillermo, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, well. In that case. I mean, we, we, the water will have to infiltrate, that's, that's what the design is, that's how the crowd space is designed, or will be designed.
So, it, you're, you're saying if the, uh, in the future, if the water table rises?
It will rise.
Uh, yes, yes, of course, um. That there is a possibility of having standing water in the crawl space?
It seems that way to me, given the heights that you have mentioned and looking at the sea level rise forecast that's on the state website. I, I don't know if you looked at that, but it does, it does seem like there will be stagnation, and I'm just wondering if you have a plan for stagnant water.
My short answer is.
In other words, in other words, I would assume you're going to pump it out.
That's, uh, that's where I was going, yes. Uh, we could talk more about that. Throw some ideas.
We are, we're actually proposing a, a pump for the. Rainwater. The infiltration system will be, since the infiltration system is lower than the crawl space, we. We have an overflow, a pump with an overflow to the city main, but it's just for drain water. Not for, um. Floodwater. And it's, uh, just an overflow, I mean, the, the system is, uh, designed to infiltrate. For a hundred year storm.
So it sounds like that may still be a gap. The pump, pumping plan is only for rainwater and not for. Storm surge, sounds like. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Um, that's all, no.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I assume that at some point, we have that issue in the Navy Yard in one of the buildings here. We have crawl spaces, uh, and, uh, when they get inundated, uh, they do need to be pumped out, so. I would assume that's where they would go on that. Um, Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, yeah, um, can I ask, please, um, at what elevation is the driveway?
Uh, yes, uh, the driveway, uh, could we scroll upward, please? To any one of the architectural plans? Thank you. Uh, so at the. At the west end of the driveway easement, where it connects with Walnut Street, the elevation is at approximately seventeen feet. And at the east end of the lot, lot along the driveway, elevation is approximately sixteen feet. So there's a, a great change of one foot between, along the length north, I'm sorry, east-west.
And, and, um, under the, uh. Resilience plan, is that underwater in twenty years?
Well, my short answer would be, yes, yes, ma'am, uh, because since the, uh, boardwalk will be at nineteen, Walnut nineteen. And Joe Finnegan Park at nineteen, uh, unless the condominium development raises that driveway, uh, it would be, yes.
So, I mean, what's, huh, what's the plan for that?
Well, that, uh, we do not have a plan for that currently, uh, that is, uh, that easement is part of the. Or, excuse me, that driveway is part of the, uh, development, the entire development, uh, we're just one, one of the three lots. So, uh, we.
Right, but that's the access into your, into the lot, right? You don't have any other access but that driveway, correct?
Vehicula, yes, ma'am, that is correct. Uh, that's something we can certainly look, uh, look into. I don't have an answer for that right now.
Yeah, um, and, and the, um, lowest, I think you asked, answered this question in response to something from Ms. Brizius. But, um, uh, the lowest, um, residential, uh, unit in your proposed development is at what height?
Nineteen point five, ma'am, same as the garage, uh, garage elevation.
Okay, so, uh, and, and what is the garage floor going to be made out of?
Yes, if we can scroll down to the foundation plan, right there, oop, right there. Up one, yes. So there is a section through the crawl space, showing the garage floor elevation at nineteen point five. So we will build our perimeter frost wall. A ten or twelve inch concrete perimeter frost wall, and then inside, within that perimeter frost wall, we will have a steel structure. Which will support pre-stressed concrete panels, which will span over the, uh, crawl space. So the floor is, would be eight to ten inch, well, probably eight of, uh, pre-stressed concrete.
Okay, and, um, and what is the, the history of that particular product with respect to flooding?
Well, um, as long, uh, I don't have any reports that I, that I can cite, ma'am. But from my experience working with concrete. Uh, here and, uh, in the Caribbean, um, as long as the, uh, the water and sand are salt-free. Uh, and the chemical action can, can act as, uh. Uh, as shown in the specifications, uh, it would be resilient to, uh, any salt water infiltration.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you just said. It's something, salt-free? I mean, it's, it's not going to be salt-free, it's going to be. Um, salt water, isn't that what we now understand?
Oh, yes, I meant, um, in, in making the concrete, as long as the, the water used is, uh, free of salt. Um, and we have the proper chemical action for the concrete, uh, it, it's going to be a pretty monolithic, uh, material. I believe, uh, resilient to, um, saltwater infiltration and penetration.
Okay, and, and how far above the twenty-year floodplain is? I, I'm sorry, I don't have this, perhaps I should, um, is nineteen point five feet, or whatever you're going to be building on?
Well, the nineteen point five feet is the. Uh, sea level rise, base flood elevation at twenty seventy.
Okay, all right. Um, so, so that's the minimum really at twenty seventy. If, if, for somehow that calculation is wrong, you're underwater, right?
Right, but, uh, your short answer is, yes, ma'am, uh, but that, that, that's the scenario under the Boston Harbor flood risk model. So, uh, hopefully that risk model, um, has some good numbers in it.
Okay, uh, uh, well, I, I hope you're right. Um, and, and why is there a residence at that level? Just in case you're not right?
Well, uh, a, a, again, we, uh, that was really for urban planning. And where, as I've worked many years with the BPDA, BRA, uh, to have a unit. At street level is very desirable, um, for, of course, uh, interaction, uh, for people walking along the street. The BPDA likes units at street level. Um, we can easily. Get, uh, that's a duplex unit, so we can easily get rid of that lower level, create garage there, or maybe, um. Amenity space like a gym or something to that effect, when, and have all living units, um. Completely off the nineteen point five elevation, ma'am.
And, and where are the utilities for, um, these units?
Uh, all the utilities would be above the twenty-two point five elevation. Uh, so they'd be at the second floor, the elevator, uh, no, there's an elevator here, pardon me, uh, at the second floor level, ma'am.
And, and so all of, there, there is nothing below, no sort of equipment at all, not the elevator? Not anything below, excuse me, twenty-two feet?
Uh, twenty-two point five, correct. Uh, I misspoke, there's no elevator in the building. Uh, this is a hundred percent electric building. Uh, there'll be no fossil fuels coming into this building, uh, we'll be using, uh, all electricity for heating, cooling and cooking. Uh, those heat pumps will be on the roof, we have flat areas designated for the mechanical corrals. Uh, so everything will be above the twenty-two point five, uh, elevation.
Okay, and i- in the garage, um, you know, are there storage areas as well as places for cars?
Yes, if we could scroll upward, please. Right there, yeah, yeah. So you can see, um, along the. Um, the southern side of the, uh, you, we have our, um, our egress corridor, running the length of the building. Um, inside the garage, there are dashed areas there for bicycle storage. Um, but not personal belongings, uh, we'll create on the upper floors, we would create, um, uh, storage closets. On the units above the garage level, but here we are, as BPDA will require us to have bicycle storage would be at the garage only.
Okay, um. I think that answers the questions that I had, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herbs?
Yeah, a few questions, I, I'm, as, as others, I have some, uh, concerns about the crawl space. I, this is something I'd like to, I mean, I guess flag to staff to check, but I believe that a residential. A new residential facility in a, in a flood zone, uh, can't have a crawl space below grade. So, uh, I think that's why you're getting a lot of reaction from us. And I know you talk about compensatory storage, but that is not something that comes into play. In the coastal zone, so I don't know if that was part of your thinking, but I, I, I just think we're all kind of scratching our heads. The idea of it, essentially creating a place where water would either seep up or, or flow in and, and stay. Um, so I, I, I don't think that's permissible, but I, I would want that to be checked.
So Commissioner Herbs, can I just ask you, so are you talking about the FEMA, um, flood zone regulations regarding like, um, habitable floors? And also you think there's something in there prohibits crawl spaces?
Doesn't prohibit crawl spaces, but below grade, um, so I'm talking about the, the building code, so, um.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm referring to, gen- generally. What I would have expected to see was a crawl space with the flood vents that are required, but nothing that goes below grade, uh, so.
Got it.
That's what I would want to check on. Um, sounds like you're quite open to elevating the, the one first floor unit, I think that would be a good idea. And I also want to flag, um, I looked while we were, while we were talking, um, DEP has comments on this project. That you are going to need to address some questions on stormwater and some, uh, having a lot to do with coastal flooding and flow paths and so forth. So I think we have other questions, but, but we could add those to the list of things that will need to be addressed.
All right, uh, the only, uh, uh, response would be, ma'am, the, the, uh, below grade crawl spaces conform with the, um, the. FEMA Tech Bulletin eleven, uh, from November two thousand and one. So we tried very hard to make sure that that below grade crawl space conformed with the FEMA requirements.
I, I could be wrong, I guess I'd asked staff to, to look at, at that. I, that's not my understanding.
Sorry, did you say two thousand and one was the, was that?
Twenty-one, the TB, the TB eleven I have, uh, was from November two thousand and one, man.
Two thousand and one.
Oh, two thousand and one, okay.
For the, uh, below grade crawl space construction?
Okay, I, I'm not familiar with it, um, and I, I, I have some familiarity, I don't claim to be a full expert. But I, I do want to make sure that, that this is, is code compliant. Thanks.
Of course. Thank you. Um, okay, uh, so, uh, members of the public, do we have any raised hands?
We do. We have a raised hand from Ms. Lyons.
Ms. Lyons?
Um, hello, thank you for calling on me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, my name is Maria Lyons, I live at one seventy-six Walnut Street, which is directly across from this property. Uh, I also serve as the environmental chairperson for the Port Norfolk Civic Association. I'm a board member of the Nippon City Watershed Association, and I'm the community representative for the Harborfront Neighborhood Alliance. First of all, I can maybe answer some questions that you've had that weren't really answered. The, uh, some of the trees that they will be removing is a beautiful specimen, Japanese red maple, some white birch. Uh, some oaks, and along the front, there are some, um, also beautiful burning bush shrubs. That match the shrubbery on the other side of the driveway that they would be, uh, removing. So those are some of the trees that will be removed. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say, and I agree with a lot of your questions. Um, the other thing that I wanted to say, and I agree with a lot of your questions, where you're going with your questions. Um, I've seen what happens to this property. It's serving as a retention pond for the area. It's serving as a climate resiliency, not only just for that. Particular property, but for the whole area. Uh, in a just normal rainstorm, that depression fills with water. Uh, during a big storm, any kind of nor'easter, um, and we've had a few over the last few years. The water is literally in waves over the property. The water comes down the street, down Walnut Street to the property. And, and also through the yacht club onto the property. And down the driveway from the river onto the property. So this entire area is inundated with water, so much, so, so deep that, like I said, there's waves on the property. And then, uh, you have to realize that not only are you getting. The storm waves coming in from the harbor, so they are saltwater waves coming in from the harbor. But you also have flooding coming down the river. All of the water from the Napa City Watershed, if it's a heavy rainstorm. Is filling the river to the highest extent. It overflows its banks. So it's not just the storm surge coming in from the harbor. The river itself overflows its banks during these big storms, so there's just water everywhere. And I think I, I sent you some pictures showing you the flooding, not only across the street. But down the street, on the other side, near Tinian Beach, Lolly Street and so forth. This is a problem for this entire neighborhood. So I can't see how we can keep building, buildings in this area, especially this property. Because like I said, the water's flowing through it, completely covering it. Um, and also, you talking about that crawl space, I, I just can't help but thinking. What a smell is going to come from there while it's dissipating, because you're trapping it under there. And as someone who has worked on cleanups of the, the beach air. Area after these big storms, it's not just water. It's, it's full of seaweed and, uh, garbage. Residue, it's going to be collecting under the residence building. I, I just can't see that. I just. It's going to smell, it's going to be a health hazard, so I, I, I can't see that. And if you don't have the sun shining on it, there's no evaporation like you have now. It can take up for a week for that water to dissipate when it fills up, whether it's from the sea or from rain. It, it takes a while for that water to dissipate, because the water, the area surrounding it is full of water. The land is full of water. So the water table is really high. Um, anyway, so that really bothers me, and I live across the street, and I don't want to be smelling that smelly water. Um, as far as letting the rainwater go into the systems of the street. Into the storm drains, well, the storm drains all shut off. They have tide gates. And during a very high tide or a storm, they all shut off. And they stay shut off as long as that water table is high, and like I said, it can be high for like a week after the storm. Because there's still water draining from the entire Napa City Watershed down to the area. So those, those storm drains are shut off, so if you, if they're going to be pumping. Water from their property into the storm rains, they're just going to back up into the street or into everybody's property. So I, I can't see that as a, as a way to go either. In fact, I can't see any way to go with this project. This is a beautiful area. Please, please come and visit it, so you see what it looks like. Uh, it's, it's a, it's beautiful trees, shrubberies, landscaping, you know. It, it's, it's not completely natural, but it does have this retention area in it that stores the water that. Is acting as climate resiliency, again, for the property around it and for the neighborhood. And as far as the climate-ready Boston plan that they talked about, now they're talking about raising. The streets of the entire Port North neigh- Port Norfolk neighborhood. And asking us to raise our houses then to, to match the street. Now, that's the idea. There is no plan. It's just an idea. And there's no funding for that. That's an unbelievable momentous project. We're going to add more people living in this neighborhood? You can't get in and out during a storm. The entire neighborhood closes off. So, anyway, these are just some of the things I hope you think about. Please come and visit the neighborhood, so you can see what it looks like. And please study the pictures that we sent. Um, this, this proposal just, it, it doesn't fit there. It, it. We have these wetland ordinances, now we have to stick with it. Thank you. Save the green space. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I took so long.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Yes, next we have, uh, Butter to one seventy-three Walnut.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Sweeting. I'm a resident of one seventy-one Walnut Street. Um, and I have a couple of questions, um, not to repeat anything that was already said, just regarding the effects of the. Um, wetland ordinance, um, looking to see, um, what the space is between one seventy-one and one seventy-three's proposed project.
Uh, that would be the required rear setback of thirty feet, ma'am.
Um, and is this project going to be part of the current condominium development, or is it going to be separate?
Uh, that is a legal question I don't have the answer to right now, ma'am, so I, I don't know, I do not know.
Okay, because there is current shared, shared driveway, um. And the, in the picture that's up as far as the, um, landscape plan, um. So that's on both sides of the driveway. One's going to be the building, the other side is going to be additional landscaping?
Uh, there would be, uh, landscaping and trees on, on the north and south side of the building, along, uh. The butter at the yacht club and also the driveway easement, as we show in the plan there, yes.
Okay, so as you pull into the property. The building is going to be on the left, and so is there going to be any landscaping to the right in that piece?
Well, you would pull, i- as you pull in, there is a, uh, a landscaped. Uh, barrier between the ingress and egress of the development, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so, uh, we would not touch that landscape barrier. Uh, there are no plans to at this moment. All the trees and planting would be on the site itself.
Okay, and, um, where on the property would there be dumpster, recycle bins, anything of that nature?
Uh, those would be all located within the garage, and we'll have to articulate those spaces for the, uh, during, uh. Uh, the neighborhood design review.
Okay, and.
Sorry, and there would be no out, there'd be no outside dumpster.
Okay, so how is the trash picked up?
Okay, if I could just interject, um, and I apologize, um, I think that, um, the proponent said you're going to go through that in your, uh, design review. That's not, um, something that the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over. So if you, yeah, and I'm not trying to cut you short, it's just that.
No, understandable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, understandable. Um, okay, I think that's the rest of my questions. I mean, I need, um, a lot more information to. See whether I agree or oppose, um, given the close proximity that this property is to my. Um, to my residents. Um, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Um, anyone else? Allison?
Uh, the only other comment I see is a written comment that, from a Mr. Lyons that is in your file.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so with that, I think, uh, this is, this has been a productive hearing. We have a lot of, um. Looks like, uh, the proponent has a lot of homework here for us. Uh, things that were brought up that I have in my notes aren't, uh, hopefully they're inclusive, but I don't think they're entirely inclusive is the, um. Uh, question of raising that ground floor unit. Uh, by the way, is that an accessible unit?
Uh, currently, it is an accessible unit. If we raise it up, we would have to put in a, um, vertical wheelchair lift.
Okay. Okay, so you're going to investigate the feasibility of raising the unit, uh, tree restoration plan, uh, as Allison outlined. Uh, I guess more information on the, uh, common driveway as to whether it can be raised or whether it will be raised. Uh, then Commissioner Herbst's, uh, question on the building code and TB eleven. Uh, the currency of that, I note that it was two thousand and one. Uh, I think it's probably still standing, but, um. Uh, some more research on that. Um, and then there are a few issues brought up by Ms. Lyons and, um, one seventy-one. Walnut, um, to address here, so, so with that, I would, um, continue the hearing. I'm sorry?
And I just want to add, and the DEP comments.
Oh, DEP comments, thank you. I told you they weren't inclusive.
Okay, well, I, I, I move to continue the hearing.
Great, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so, uh, that passes six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Greatly appreciate your time.
Uh, next item on the agenda is a notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine zero eight from VHB on behalf of the. Massachusetts, uh, Port Authority for the proposed rehabilitation of runway fifteen R dash three-three L and repaving of. Connecting intersections located at Logan International Airport in East Boston, uh, resource areas, land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, Brad Washburn, uh, Deputy Director for Environmental Planning at Massport. Uh, and I just want to say that I'm, uh, joined here tonight by Sarah Denechuk, who is the Senior Project Manager, and Vivian Kimball. From VHB, who is our consultant on the project.
Great, thank you. Okay, floor's yours.
Great, thank you, uh, Chair Parker and members of the commission. Uh, I'm just going to give a very brief overview of the project and then hand it back over. To you, and, and again, joined here by Sarah and Vivian for any technical or resource-related questions. Uh, so if we could go to the first slide, Allison, please. Uh, just an overview of the project area, um, go to the next slide, actually. Uh, so you can see, uh, that the project is, um, runway fifteen right, thirty-three left. That's outlined in yellow here. You can see the, uh, hundred-year floodplain from the FEMA map outlined in blue. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Okay, uh, so the proposed project, um, includes the rehabilitation of that entire runway, uh, runway fifteen R, thirty-three left at Logan Airport. Uh, much of the existing runway and taxiways, uh, the pavement is at the end of its useful life, uh, so the proposed project. Includes repaving and/or removing all of the runway pavement and portions of the taxiway pavement. Uh, while we're doing this work, we will be installing new lighting, sensors and markings as well. I just want to note that all work will be within the existing airfield. Um, and there will be an overall net reduction of impervious surface of approximately a hundred and two thousand square feet. Uh, due to removal of some areas of taxiway pavement and existing artificial turf. Uh, go to the, oh no, let me stay on the slide, sorry. Uh, so work within adjacent, within or adjacent to resource areas. Um, again, Chair Parker mentioned that the resource area of concern here is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Of the entire hundred and five acre project, uh, just shy of an acre, point nine eight is within land subject to coastal storm flowage. And we are outside of any other resource area, and the buffer zones, uh, just as you see here at the. I think in all the last bullets is that the closest point to the coastal bank is over a hundred and thirty feet. So again, we're trying to minimize our in, our impact here with this, uh, in-kind rehabilitation of the runway. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is a little harder to read. I actually probably just go to the, the last slide, please. Uh, so in terms of mitigation, uh, we'll, we will develop a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Um, in compliance with that Nifty's Construction General Permit. Uh, we'll also develop a soil erosion and sediment control plan that includes erosion control measures. Such as silt fences, biodegradable fiber rolls, uh, application of water for dust control and the use of. Um, erosion control blankets or similar methods for soil stabilization. Uh, we will retain an environmental monitor to ensure compliance with permit requirements and inspect erosion controls throughout construction. Um, and lastly, unpaved areas, uh, unpaved disturbed areas will be restored with natural heritage-approved seed mix. Erosion controls will remain in place until the area is stabilized, and, uh, all construction debris will be removed from the site. Again, so kind of quick and, uh, quick and dirty here, but just, um, again, this is a fairly routine, uh, rehab of the. Runway fifteen thirty-three. Again, we're trying to minimize the, the impact that we have, and again, we're, uh, down to just under an acre of. Work within land, so coastal storm flowage, flowage, and we think with the mitigation measures proposed, I think we, uh. Again, cannot, you know, move forward, uh, but anyways, hand it back over to the commission, and I happy for any questions or, or comments you folks have.
Great, thank you, Brad. How long is the construction, um, going to last?
Uh, probably turn that over to Sarah, but we are starting some preliminary work, uh, I believe in May or June. And then we do have a heart shut down in August, about a hundred days, so that we can complete this work.
Uh, yes, Brad, that is correct. We're actually, our, the majority of the rehab is going to happen starting in August. We're, we're keenly aware of the summer tunnel closure and the impact that would have on us getting, um, asphalt to the site and other stuff away from the site. So we're going to be doing some enabling work on the runway, uh, where we can in the summer, in some of the installation of the lighting infrastructure. With the bulk of the paving, uh, later in the year. Later in the summer.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Allison, what do you have?
Uh, mainly on this, just regarding that, uh, long-term, uh, construction. Would like to see concurrent with the stormwater prevention plan prior to construction, more details around. Should a coastal storm arise during construction, what will be the procedures?
More context for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't think I quite followed. What, are you asking?
I just like more detail prior to construction on procedures, should a coastal storm happen during construction? What will your procedures be for that instance?
Okay, um, yeah, I would have to defer to Green on that.
Okay, but I think what, what Allison is asking, uh, that, um, I think we would put in as a condition that prior to construction. Uh, something would be added regarding, uh, flood control in the event of a flood. I assume that that's.
Yes.
That's acceptable, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I think we can certainly do that. I will say, um, based on my twenty years out on the airfield, we have not had significant flooding in these locations. Because most of it is kind of in the center of the airfield, but we would certainly incorporate that.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, that I see on the slide that there's a hundred thousand, um, removal of a hundred thousand impervious area.
Correct, yes. Uh, so we will be relocating, um, a few of the taxiways and, and by. With those removals and removal of some of the existing artificial turf, we're actually removing, you know, uh, over two acres of existing impervious.
Alright, I didn't want to land on something short as, you know, I worry about you guys.
Plenty of, plenty of runways that some of the.
Alright, yeah, you get me nervous, that's all. The, um. Does the water, water on those runways just run off to the side? Is that how that operates?
Yes.
And then, then you just collect it later and, and move it along. Um, alright, oh, that was it. I just didn't know, two acres of runway makes me nervous, but. I got to understand, taxiway.
Pervious.
Taxiway, actually.
We want you, we want you to land safely, John.
Right, it, it actually improves the geometry of the taxiway turns. We, we, we did about a three-year study on the geometry related to F A criteria. And some of the hotspots, so we're not doing anything to the runways. It's a lot of cleaning up the taxiway intersections to make them better.
I got it, just wanted to hear you say that on public record. Thanks, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Garen?
Uh, no comment, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Conan?
Thank you, Chair Parker. Um, I saw that flooding, the one hundred-year flooding, but we've clearly had. Flooding of higher exceedance probability and lower. Um, I wonder if you have a map to share on five hundred-year flood?
Uh, that's the FEMA. It shows the FEMA five hundred year plus the hundred year, so I don't know whoever's there driving the slideshow, if they can go back, I think it shows that as well. Yeah, so you can see it's mostly coming from the neighborhood side, that the runway still stays dry in the five hundred-year flood.
So this map is the five hundred-year flood, not the hundred-year flood?
Yeah, the, the, the light blue shows the hundred-year floodplain, and the orange, uh, to the left of Logan and near Route one is the five hundred-year floodplain. So again, the entire airfield is dry in that five. So again, the entire airfield is dry in that 500-year flood event.
Meaning there is no orange.
Correct.
500-year flood that reaches the airport.
Correct. Actually, I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but again, that towards the left of the the image, you'll see some orange um polygons there, and that's the locations of the 500-year flood zone.
Yeah, the neighborhood suffers from the 500-year flood zones, but the airport doesn't.
Correct.
Okay, great. That's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Thank you. Uh, do we have anybody from the public, Allison?
I'm not seeing anything.
I don't see anything either. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you. Great, thank you very much. You're welcome. Um, next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from Horsey Witten Group, Inc. on behalf of the Arnold Arboretum of Harvard University on the jurisdictional status of a stormwater detention basin located in Zero South Street in um Rosendale. Uh, Commissioner Garen, uh, I think you have something to say here?
Uh, yes, um, I will be recusing myself for this particular hearing because I'm an employee of the uh property owner here, uh, the Boston Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, good evening, members of the commission. My name is Jennifer Ralstab. I'm with the senior, I'm a senior water resources engineer with the Horsey Witten Group. I'm here with my colleague Amy Ball, uh, a senior ecologist, wetland scientist, and Danny Schizler, who's the head of operations and management for the Arnold Arboretum. Next slide, please. Uh, Horsey Witten Group is seeking a negative determination uh for a basin which is located south of South Street and north of the Needham MBTA commuter railroad right-of-way. Um, roughly extending um from the west at the Archdale Overpass to roughly uh the east of the Arboretum Road Tunnel. Um, here you can see the limit of the stormwater basin of which we're requesting uh determination in the dashed line here. Next slide, please. The project, uh, the request is part of a project um that we're currently working on to design a boardwalk connection between the Arboretum Road Green Link Project. That's the project uh roughly to the north that connects the existing Blackwell footpath uh to the Arboretum Road Tunnel. Um, and that uh connection uh that we're proposing would be from the Arboretum Road Tunnel to the South Street and Bussy Street intersection. Um, this project is referred to as the South Street Connector. This is the second phase of the Rosendale Gateway Path. Um, the larger path you can see on the lower right-hand image here. Um, the goal of this project overall is to enhance the connectivity for pedestrians and improve access um to the urban wild and the Arnold Arboretum. Um, I'm not going to speak any further about the project um in this slide deck, but happy to take questions during the Q and A. Um, as Aldo mentioned, uh, the parcel which includes the Bussy Brook Meadow um is owned by the Boston Parks and Recreation Department. Um, it is maintained by the Arnold Arboretum um in coordination with BPRD and the City of Boston Conservation Commission. Next slide, please. Um, this is an image uh from 1927, an aerial photo, just to give you a little bit of a sense of where we're located. On the right-hand side here, you can kind of see uh the extent of the um MBTA uh railroad um and then the Arnold Arboretum sort of in the foreground to the background. The dashed blue line represents the stormwater basin as we're referring to it in a previous slide. Um, the area here is represented in this image and currently is a low-lying area in the landscape. Um, it is part of Bussy Brook Meadow, as I mentioned before, and is designated currently as an urban wild by BPRD. Um, and so it's protected from further development. Um, and as we'll talk about here in the next few slides, um, it is currently being used as a local stormwater basin. Next slide, please. Horsey Witten Group has been working with the Arnold Arboretum as well as several city agencies, including the Public Works Department, uh, Boston Transportation Department, uh, BPRD and uh the Boston Water and Sewer Commission um to evaluate the existing um infrastructure and conditions of the site um since about 2015. Um, this image here just shows uh the construction of the MWA sewer, which is currently located underneath uh South Street. Um, South Street itself uh is a uh street, one of the oldest streets in Bon, Boston, I think, created um in the 1600s. Um, and so both of these pieces of infrastructure um have subsequently separated this low-line area from surrounding landscape uh for the last almost 100 years. Next slide, please. Further improvements to South Street and to the drainage infrastructure have been made since then. Um, this is an image from 1956 of a public works project that widened that intersection at Bussy and South Street and improved the drainage infrastructure. A little bit hard to see here, but in addition to catch basins, there are two outfalls that were installed and are currently uh functioning and discharging to the basin. Um, next slide. Additional improvements uh were made in this area in the late night, um, 1990s. Um, there were two large stormwater events, uh, sorry, uh, rain events uh in 1996 and then again in 1998, um, which flooded uh the Archdale neighborhood, residential neighborhood um adjacent to this area. As a result, um, there were some studies done and BWSC uh designed and implemented um two uh stormwater infrastructure projects. This is the first one. Uh, this is a stormwater swale that is located at the foot of Peters Hill. And there is a connection via two large pipes uh that connects to the stormwater basin, which is um in the lower image. Next slide. In addition to that, uh, there was an installation of a uh 36-inch RCP which connects that uh low-line stormwater basin uh to uh the Bussy Brook Meadow um under uh storm conditions so that it can flow positively towards the meadow. Next slide, please. There are some more recent improvements in 2017 as part of a redesign of the Bussy Brook, uh, sorry, Bussy Street and South Street intersection. PDBD um installed a bio-retention area which serves to manage some of the stormwater in the uh intersection. In addition to that, um, as part of the improvements uh that were made in 2020 as part of the repaving of South Street, um, there were some additional catch basins that were installed um that uh don't discharge directly to the basin, but also uh discharged to the meadow just downstream of the outlet of that 36-inch RCP, as I mentioned before. Next slide. I'm going to go through these quickly. I just wanted to uh show some images of the site. Um, Horsey Witten Group, as I mentioned, along with the Arnold Arboretum and BPRD has been um working on this project since 2017. So we've been uh regularly going out onsite and looking at uh the resort, uh, the um areas, uh drainage infrastructure and the conditions of the existing uh area. In addition, Horsey Witten Group and uh Arnold Arboretum met with members of the commission, uh former members of the commission, Nick Moreno and Kate Odenheimer um in September to walk the site. Um, what we're seeing here in these two images are some of the drainage infrastructure uh conditions in 2015. Next slide, please. And these are those uh two outfalls and then another smaller outfall from South Street. This is the infrastructure that was connected to that Peters Hill swale. Next slide, please. Uh, the basin does get inundated, um not frequently. It actually is mostly dry, um but you can see here after a rain event in 2017, um, it did hold water, um it has held water um over uh the last five years. Uh, observations, you know, roughly a couple of times a year, it does infiltrate quite regularly. Uh, and uh as far as we know, uh infiltrates such that there is, it's dry uh within the 48-hour period. Um, next slide, please. This is an image from July 2022. Um, Amy Ball, our wetland scientist, uh went out onsite um following um uh a review that she had done in 2015 to evaluate um some of the wetland indicator species. As we noted in our application, there are various such as soft rush, uh purple loo strife and clumps of deer tongue grass that exist um amongst other upland species. Uh, it is an urban wild. There are no collections in this space. Um, so it has been largely untouched um over the last, um, I don't know, 50 years or so. Um, we have noted um in the application um that in addition to the um stormwater outfalls and drainage infrastructure, we um did do some modeling in this case to uh modeling calculations to evaluate the potential uh for uh flooding. We do know that the existing capacity is roughly uh 1.3 acre feet based on the elevations um surveyed and those provided by BWSC. Uh, the actual uh volume capacity that will get to this basin uh for a one-year 24-hour storm is larger than that. Um, next slide. This is just another image. Um, the previous image was looking towards the west, towards Peter Hill. This is looking towards the east. This is looking towards Arboretum Road. Um, you can see here that it is relatively dry, um even after a recent storm event. Next slide. That said, there are um local small areas, uh puddles and sort of of wet areas. We did walk the site with Nick and Kate, as I mentioned, and we did show them these areas. Next slide. As shown in the previous uh image from 2015, we do have uh outfalls that are discharging into this basin. Um, this is a picture from July uh showing some of that sedimentation and erosion that is currently going on from the outfalls um on the slope uh from South Street. Next slide. Um, this is an image of that bio-retention basin. Um, this is uh being maintained by the Arnold Arboretum currently. Um, and is uh has been um uh planted and I believe um uh implemented some um additional features to uh in, um, improve its functionality over time. Um, next slide. Uh, this is just an image uh to, and a reminder um that this is a, an urban wild and designated as such. Um, the Arnold Arboretum has been working with BPRD, um Paul Sutton to um focus on this area. We are um really uh working on both public outreach and engagement um to talk about how uh the site can um more visitors can uh come here and visit here and um as part of this project, uh we would look to, you know, maintain um this as an urban wild. Um, next slide, please. Um, uh Danny Schizler, uh will, I think at this point, talk a little bit about the o, operations and maintenance of the site currently?
Yeah, thank you, Jen. So my name's Danny Schisler. I'm head of operations and project management at the Arboretum. Um, as Jen mentioned, uh, the project area is part of the the Bussy Brook Meadow, which is a 24 uh acre tract that was added to the Arboretum's indenture in 1996. Um, maintenance and operation of that tract, uh which is all urban wild, uh is governed by an agreement with the Conservation Commission and the Boston Parks Department. We most uh recently renegotiated that agreement in fall of 2022. Uh, and Paul Sutton and Nick Moreno were heavily involved in that. Um, in terms of maintenance in the actual project area, uh, this is uh what we call the mixed vegetation area where we have a mix of uh native and uh invasive species. Um, being that it's uh directly adjacent to the MBTA right-of-way, there is heavy invasive pressure in the area. It's also an area where we see a lot of trash accumulation doing it due to it being so close to the roadway. So in terms of how we maintain this, uh, it's uh seasonal mowings uh from three to six times per year um to make sure that we can maintain open sightlines, that we can uh keep down um uh trash accumulation in the area. Um, we can uh avoid uh any safety issues such as homeless encampments uh or needles. And also to, of course, maintain access to the stormwater facilities in the area. So beyond that, there is currently no uh pedestrian access due to the steep grades, so it's a pretty minimal uh management of of the area uh at this time. Thanks, Jen.
Thanks. Um, Amy Ball is going to talk a little bit about um the regulatory um aspects. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Uh, for the record, Amy Ball, Senior Ecologist with the Horsey Witten Group. Um, so we presented all of this information and the images and the background um that we were able to uncover in support of a sort of an initial assessment that we made in 2015 that the area is a um, you know, functioning, operating, being maintained as a stormwater basin. Um, so we are merely here before the commission seeking a negative determination. Um, in in agreement with this, this determination that we think it's a detention basin um and not any other regulatory resource area, um despite the the large size that it would, you know, qualify volumetrically to be um land subject to to flowage um or i-isolated land subject to flowage. Um, which is a flooding, pardon me, um, under the regulatory definitions being greater than a quarter acre foot um of water that can be held within the basin. And um, we, you know, we fully recognize that the basin itself serves as a very important function in the landscape to mitigate flooding of the surrounding areas. Um, and to provide for storm damage prevention and um and the maintaining of the basin should be considered um just that as stormwater basin. So I guess with that, we'd like to turn that back over to the commission for questions, comments, discussion. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, Allison, uh, what are your thoughts on this?
So broadly, I would defer to the commission on this. I would simply note that I was not able, it it looks as though the local wetlands ordinance does not name this stormwater exemption that is named in this WPA. So that's 310 CMR 10.022C. Uh, the local wetlands ordinance names other exemptions from the Wetlands Protection Act, but does not include this one.
Yeah, okay. Um, anything else?
That's all just as the uh proponent described, it would qualify as isolated land subject to flooding under the local wetlands ordinance.
Okay, um, before we go to the commissioners, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat. The application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to to staff via email at cc@boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston Enviro using the hashtag #concomhearing. Um, so for this one, um, I know we have some stormwater questions. Uh, I wanted to go to Commissioner um Herbst first. Uh, sorry to ambush you, but um you you have extensive experience uh with inland wetlands, so I'm curious as to your comments. Uh, I'll do my best. I think, um, I guess I have some questions uh for the team. It it seems to me that it makes sense that that the stormwater exemption under the act makes sense. I'm wondering what you think about the possibility that it may be subject to jurisdiction under the ordinance? Um, if you, if you have thoughts on that, no?
Amy, you want to take that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
I'm sorry, Amy. I was thinking it was probably
Amy question.
Thank you. Um, so, right, we we um, we fully recognize that it it would qualify as, you know, ILSF under the, both the Wetlands Protection Act under and under the local ordinance. Um, what we are really, we're looking at as is, you know, with so many outfalls already, you know, being directed, directing stormwater um into this basin. Um, it's just never been intended to be a, no, that's not the right way to put it. But it's, it's a low-lying area receiving all of this stormwater with, you know, intentional projects um over time and particularly since the 1996. The, you know, the ongoing maintenance and the maintenance agreement that has been um in place with the Arnold Arboretum and BPRD. They are um the, the ordinance sort of came in in between, um, you know, what has been an ongoing practice. And um, you know, and this question of whether or not it could be jurisdictional is is sort of a newer thing that we're, we're kind of grappling with, but we do believe um really that that it is operating and ma, being maintained as this detention basin despite the fact that it has a large capacity to hold a large volume of water.
Got it. I mean, I
Answered the question, but
Well, I, yeah, I think that's helpful. I, I actually didn't.
I'm going to show that I'm not so experienced Chair Parker, but I I am. I was actually thinking that it maybe didn't qualify as isolated land because it it is, it's not isolated. It has inlets and outlets. So maybe I'm not understanding that definition. I guess I'm. The truth is, I'm I'm inclined to think it makes sense to treat it as a stormwater basin. I'm not 100% clear if that's the precise meaning of 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 our language, but it strikes me that but that that's what that language was written for was was not to treat places that have been essentially functioning as stormwater treatment as as wetlands.
Correct. Commissioner Herbst, yeah, that that's where I thought the filing was going with the recitation of the conveyances and the infrastructure that's present.
So I'm sorry, could I ask Amy Ball, what my question about is it actually isolated? Am I misunderstanding this definition that says isolated needs not to have inlets and outlets?
I believe it still would hold water below, I mean, the the inlets certainly are conveyances of stormwater. The outlet is that connecting pipe between this basin. And it's like a 36 inch pipe that connects this basin to the larger Bussy Brook Meadow to sort of the north and northeast. That elevation, the inlet elevation is invert elevation is is higher than the volume that will be held within the basin below that elevation, if that makes any sense.
It does. That that explains it. So I've asked many questions, Chair Parker. I'm not sure what the answer should be. What would, what's the practical impact if if it is isolated land subject to flooding? For your work.
Well, for the work, if it were to become a jurisdictional resource area as opposed to, you know, what it's been, you know, functioning and operating and maintained as, it would then, you know, bring into jurisdiction work that has been going ongoing for a good 20 or so years by the Arboretum, by BPRD. And I I guess I don't know really what the implications would be larger for other entities that are in the area. Jen, you're gonna have to help me with all of the the alphabet soup there, but.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just speak to the fact that, again, you know, it isn't a generally an urban wild. That said, with the invasive species, you know, that are existing there and the management that it's been ongoing in that location and the discussions that we have been having with BPRD to at least partially restore some of the species to native. You know, some of that work as part of this proposed project and an ongoing work that the Arboretum is doing. The practicalities of that would just, you know, be that, obviously, if it's jurisdictional, any work that we would do within the area would be, you know, subject to. Yeah, exactly. Subject to permit.
Not not prohibited, but.
Correct. Subject. Yes, exactly, exactly. So I think, you know, it is, like we said, just because of the, you know, flood mitigation, the stormwater work that has already been going on to address some of the neighborhood conditions. I think, you know, there is going to be in the future, as we've talking a lot tonight about, you know, climate resiliency. There is going to need to be work ongoing in the near future, but also long term to sort of make that more functioning facility. And so for that reason, I think it will, you know, in our opinion, I think better be better held as an existing stormwater basin and and not an ILSF.
Okay, well, that that answers my questions.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, so back in after the floods in 96, the area that you showed crossing South Street with the large 36 inch pipes, they were constructed because the MBTA had previously filled an existing stormwater basin on the other side of South Street. So that was put to provide relief for a neighborhood. The outlet that you discuss was was never there. The water used to naturally flow off of South Street and sit inside this basin and get as high as it could. And that outlet was put to relieve pressure so the MBTA embankment wouldn't be endangered. So that outlet was put in 96. It was never there. The water that did make it to that little area, that little wetland, we'll call it. We installed that just so we can provide relief because we were afraid about the the MBTA embankment. So those are constructed manmade. So it's almost like we took a natural area and made it a stormwater basin for that purpose. So that's just the history of what is now, whether that makes it an impact or not. It purposely was there so that the water could reside within that isolated area as it always had naturally flowing there and and infiltrating the ground to the stony book. But of course, the MBTA is a manmade artificial barrier that was built way back when. So I know that doesn't add anything to anything, but I'm just giving you the history because because we helped build it. So I'm I'm not sure how that will impact any decision we make on it. So it works as a natural basin for 99% of the storms, but if it's raining like hell to keep us from endangering any of the other physical properties around there, that overflow is built so we could get to the Bussy system than to the stony book. So.
That's correct. And yeah, I was I was only just gonna add that, in fact, that is true. And and the inundation, the sort of the picture I showed from 2017, it does only really have water sitting in it when it is, when there are large events, because it it in and of itself, the basin doesn't actually produce that much runoff.
Right. So, so there, I have nothing more to add except to confuse the issue with. That's it. So we can keep these, we hate when these meetings end early. We like to keep going until 10 o'clock.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you. No, that was actually very helpful. And Allison, I'm having a hard time getting back to the ordinance itself. My recollection is I don't think that there's anything in there sort of grandfathering these areas. I don't know if you know of anything or you can quickly check as we're going through the comments here.
No, I I checked and it calls up specifically a number of exemptions, but I have not found a general grandfathering of 310.
Got it.
Exemptions.
Okay, it was just the two that we had discussed. Okay, okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. On the definition, ILSF, I think it's pretty clear in the Wetlands Protection Act. And there are many distinctions made to identify what an ILSF is. And one of those is called out here. To distinguish the important parts of a larger water resource system for which the cumulative effects of even small filings can lead incrementally to, small fillings can lead incrementally to serious flooding systems over an entire floodplain and those that are only locally significant to the interests of storms, damage and flood prevention. But by making these distinctions, the regulations provide appropriate protection to land areas that function in different ways. So that's one thing that's called out here. There's another thing is it says here, obviously, in any kind of water collection has to have an inlet and outlet. The phrase without inlet and outlet is not intended to be taken literally. And and that in the context of this definition, inlet is intended to refer only to a hydrologic connection with a 100 year flood event. So really, it's pretty clear on BLSF, as in bordering land subject to flooding. An ILSF and calls out and explains why the inlet and outlet points that Commissioner Herbst brought up are, in fact, you know, they can be present even in the case of an ILSF. So to me, it sounds like it is very much in the spirit of the ordinance itself. And the fact that it is not being grandfathered, no exceptions being grandfathered, seems to me like this is within jurisdiction.
Thanks. Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Commissioner Herbst, any closing comments on that?
No, I don't. No, thanks.
Okay. Okay. Amy, did you have any?
Could I just ask, please, do we have a recommended staff on this?
Staff defers to the commission on this just notes that while the exemption is there in the WPA, we did not find the same exemption in the ordinance. So are not sure how how it would be interpreted as exempt.
Okay, thank you. Amy, did you have any rejoinder before we go to a vote?
Um, yeah. Only just to, you know, to to hearken back to what we were talking about with the, you know, the implications of this area being suddenly jurisdictional. You know, within the past year or so, two years, maybe now that your ordinance is is in place. Does does lend a certain regulatory burden to the maintenance of this area, to anything that would happen in and around the area with the roadways, with the stormwater. And, you know, and I fully appreciate that the the ordinance does not have such an exemption under under the the regulations. But it does. It that it does still function as a an important function and landscape for mitigating flooding, which we, you know, we've acknowledged both in our our project narrative and and here this evening. Such that it it is. I guess it's something, this is why we're here. We're trying, we're trying to to not create an additional burden for for all those who are working in and around and maintaining the additional, the the basin as as is and has been the the case for, you know, a couple of decades now.
Yeah, and I and I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I think, you know, I looked through the ordinance yesterday. And I know Allison has looked through it. Commissioner Condon quoted from it extensively there. And I think the the problem is we just don't have an exemption for this situation. So it feels jurisdictional to me at this point. So just quickly, do we have, Allison, anybody from the public who'd like to comment?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, so with that, I'll throw a throw out and entertain a motion to issue a positive determination of applicability. Do we have that motion? Do we have a second?
Clarifying question, Parker? Do you mean both the ordinance and the WPA?
Under the ordinance, I'm sorry. So do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it because I have to give one motion per year. So this could be it and I'll be clear for the rest of 12 months.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon? Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Okay, and I both ayes. That carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's also been a number of continuances continued to the February 15th, 2023 hearing. It's notice of intent for DEP file number 0061772 and Boston file number 2021-010 continued. Also, it's notice of intent for DEP file number 0061891 and Boston file number 2022-046. Notice of intent for DEP file number 0061704 and Boston file number 2020-007. Notice of intent for DEP file number 0061820 and Boston file number 2021-045. Also continued as a request for a determination of applicability regarding the property located at 2 Starling Street, 34 and 36 Willlet Street in West Roxbury. Commission will now begin its regular meeting. The first item on the agenda is yet another continued request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061613. Next item on the agenda is a ratification of the emergency certification issued to the Massachusetts Port Authority for the driving of temporary piles to secure a marina break, to secure marina breakwater barges within the Boston Harbor Shipyard and Marina and 256 Marginal Street East Boston. Allison, what do you have on that?
Sure. On Friday, December 30th, 2022, staff received a request for an emergency certification from the Massachusetts Port Authority and their tenant, Boston Harbor Shipyard and Marina at 256 Marginal Street. The marina breakwater barges had sustained damages during the storm on December 23rd, losing the pipe piles securing the breakwater barges number three and four. They had attempted to temporarily hold the breakwater barges in place with spud barges, but that had proven not to be adequate in subsequent high tides and winds. After consultation with Massport and input from the harbor master, staff issued an emergency certification for the immediate stabilization of the breakwater barges through the driving of temporary piles to hold them in place. Staff recommends ratifying the emergency certification, but I am available for questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions? Okay, with that, then I would entertain a motion to ratify the emergency certification issued to Massport.
I so moved.
Second, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon? Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I both aye. Okay, thank you, Allison. Our next item on the agenda is sorry, administrative updates.
And we have no additional updates.
Okay, thank you. I bet you are just itching to say that you've found the candidate that you're going to hire for commission agent. So
Looking forward to that. Next time.
Okay, next item on the agenda is acceptance of orders of conditions. The first one, Commissioner Garen will need to recuse himself because it involves Parks Department. So I would look for a motion to accept the order of conditions for notice of intent for DEP file number 006-1905 and Boston file number 2022-054. Commissioner Sullivan, it's a new year.
I already gave you my one for crying out loud.
It's good for the whole meeting.
Oh.
I'll, I'll accept that as making a motion. Do we have?
I'm making, yeah, I'm making the reluctantly making the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I both aye. It carries five, nothing. One recusal. We can all vote on this one. Next item of the agenda is acceptance of the order of conditions for notice of intent for DEP file number 0061906 and Boston file number 2022-055. Who would like to make that motion?
I will do that.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
The correct slide up? Is this the correct one for?
Our slides might be slightly out of order, so I'm I'm a little turned around, frankly. I'm trying to search around for them. So apologies for that.
Make sure we're voting on.
Here we go. Do you have a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I both aye. Okay, that carries six, nothing. Last item on the agenda is acceptance of meeting minutes from December 14th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Garen?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon? Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I both aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, the motion we've all been waiting for. Motion to adjourn. Allison, Kat, thank you so much. Journeying by acclamation, are there any objections?
No.
Okay, great. Have a good evening and see you in a few weeks. Thank you.
Happy New Year.